Okay, good morning. House has come to order. It's day two of our special session, Saturday, May 16th, 2020. Going to first start with the opening prayer by today's chaplain, Representative Simpson of House District 21. And as termine folks out there, we normally all stand in the chamber, leadin' prayer. It's kind of awkward standing up at home, everybody's got a different deal, so we'll have a screenshot. And the only one we'll be able to hear is Representative Simpson, so if you'd all rise, and then after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father who art in heaven. Prior to beginning our day's work in this special legislative session, we take a minute to bow our heads, to acknowledge thee, and to express our appreciation unto thee. We're so grateful to be residents of the United States of America, and particularly to live in this beautiful state that we call Wyoming. Grateful for our freedoms and the privileges that we have here. Father, we're grateful for this opportunity of serving as legislators. And we always remember the time-honored responsibilities that we have in this assignment. We're grateful that coronavirus has been kind to us in our state and has been mild. But we pray for those who have been affected, particularly those who have lost loved ones. We pray that thou wilt be merciful and turn back this pandemic from our land. Now, in regards to today's activities, we pray for wisdom and understanding that we may be effective in our assignments this day. Please bless us, and we'll be able to accomplish our objectives of bringing financial relief to the residents of our state. We acknowledge thy hand in our lives, and we thank thee for our many blessings. We offer this prayer unto thee, and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Okay, members, if you would remain standing. And again, to explain to folks out there, we normally all say the Pledge of Allegiance together. And today, we can't do that, so we're going to just have it led by one person. And that'll be our Majority Floor Leader, Eric Barlow, Campbell County, who's himself a Marine Corps veteran. Served United States Marine Corps from 1984 to 1988. Representative Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members, please place your hand over your heart. And Congress has allowed service members, veterans, to render a hand salute. Join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Convening roll call for the second day of special session, May 16th, 2020. Barlow?
Here.
Blackburn?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Burlingame?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Clem?
Here.
Clifford?
Here.
Connolly? Connolly? Repeat, please. Connolly? Gimme a thumbs up. Connolly, here. Crank?
Here.
Dayton Selman?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
Air?
Here.
Flutner?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Furphy?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Greer?
Here.
Haley?
Here.
Helen Anne?
Here.
Henderson?
Here.
Hunt?
You.
Jennings?
Here.
Kinner?
Here.
Kirkbride?
Here.
Larson Lloyd?
Here.
Larson Dan?
Here.
Lindholm?
Here.
Flauks?
Here.
McGuire?
Here.
Miller? Newsome?
Here.
Nicholas? Nicholas?
Don't have any volume.
Ni- Nicholas? Gimme a thumbs up.
Here.
Here. Northrup?
Here.
Ober Mueller?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Paxton?
Here.
Pelkey?
Here.
Piparinen?
Here.
Honell?
Here.
Roscoe?
Here.
Salazar?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Summers?
Here.
Stiff?
Here.
Stevar?
Present.
Sweeney?
Here.
Tass?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Washit?
Here.
Western?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Winter? Repeat, please.
Here.
Yin?
Here.
Zwanitzer?
Can you hear me now?
Here.
I'm here.
Mr. Speaker?
Here.
We have sixty present.
Okay, thank you. First order of business is the reading of the Journal, the Journal Committee Report by the Chief Clerk.
Your Journal Committee reports that the Journal of May 15th, 2020, has been read and recommend that it be approved, Representative Yin and Western.
Okay. Before we get started today, are there any announcements, privileges of the floor, those kind of things, just raise your hand? I see Representative Connolly's hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to check my audio and see if it is better now. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have messages from the Senate?
Mr. Speaker, the bill's listed below, passed the Senate on third reading in an amended form by the vote indicated. Eyes, Senate File 1001, Emergency Appropriation COVID-19 Funds 2. Eyes, 27, knows 2, one excused. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Mr. Speaker, the bill's listed below, passed the Senate on the third reading in an amended form by the vote indicated. Senate File 1002, Emergency Government Action COVID-19 2. Eyes, 25, knows 4, 1 excused. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Mr. Speaker, the bill's listed below, passed the Senate on third reading in an amended form by the vote indicated. Senate File 1003, Emergency Budgeting COVID-19 2. Eyes, 27, knows 2, excused 1. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Mr. Speaker, the bill's listed below, passed the Senate on third reading in an amended form by the vote indicated. Senate File 1004, COVID-19 Business Relief Programs 2. Eyes, 26, 1 excused, 3 conflict. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Mr. Speaker, the bill's listed below, passed the Senate on a third reading in amended form by the vote indicated. Senate File 1005, Coronavirus Immunity Provisions. Eyes, 23, knows 6, excused 1. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk.
Okay, thank you, Chief Clerk. Next order of business is the introduction of Senate Files. The first Senate File for our consideration is 1001. Chief Clerk, please read the bill.
Senate File 1001, Sponsored by Management Council.
First reading of the bill.
Emergency Appropriation COVID-19 Funds 2.
Okay, pursuant to Joint Rule 23-1H Romanet I, Senate File Number 1001 is referred directly to third reading. The next bill for our consideration is Senate File Number 1002.
Senate File 1002, Sponsored by Management Council.
First reading of the Senate File?
Emergency Powers COVID-19 2.
Pursuant to Joint Rule 23-1H Romanet I, Senate File 102 is referred directly to third reading. The next Senate File for our consideration is Senate File 1004.
Senate File 1004, Sponsored by Joint Minerals Business and Economic Development Committee.
First reading of the bill.
COVID-19 Business Relief Programs 2.
Okay, pursuant to Joint Rule 23-1H Romanet I, Senate File Number 1004 is referred directly to third reading. Okay, thank you, Chief Clerk. Now we're on third reading of Senate Files. Next order of business, pursuant to Joint Rule 23-1, Paragraph H Romanet 2, Senate File 1001 is placed directly to third reading for the purpose of explanation of Senate amendments. Chief Clerk, can you please read the Senate File?
Senate File 1002, or 1001, Sponsored by Management Council. Emergency Appropriation COVID-19 Funds 2, an act relating to the emergency expenses of government, be it enacted by the Legislature of the State of Wyoming.
Okay, thank you, and so that bill is sponsored by our Management Council Committee, and so a member of that committee will do the explanation of the Senate amendments, and that would be Mr. Speaker Pro Tem, Representative Summers. And I just want to ask staff, Jamie and others, he has a Joint Conference Committee Report, and I'm not sure if you could screen share that with everyone, or... But anyway, we'll work on that. So I'd like to turn the floor over then to Representative Summers.
Mr. Speaker, thank you, and Mr. Speaker, what I'm going to do right now, real quick, is I'm going to send this report out to all House members. And so...
Okay, we'll just pause a minute. You're going to email that out?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll just stand at ease for a moment?
Yeah, thanks, just give me a second here to find the right one. I've got to scroll through all the possibilities until I find all House members, and I'm struggling finding it, maybe, uh... Maybe Dawn is...
While you're, uh, while you're working on that, I have a couple hands come up, I think members want to privilege of the floor. I have Representative Greer and Representative Stevar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, privileged to ask a question.
Yeah, please do.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I'm anticipating explaining Senate File 004. And so I'm prepared to do so, but what, I have not seen any Conference Committee Reports, where, where do I find those? And maybe that's the same question the rest of...
Well, we, we haven't had any Conference Committee. But I think what Representative Summers had produced was really just a showing of the amendments to that. Now, I can ask staff if they've done that for those other bills. I know Representative Summers put this together for this bill that he was presenting. But really, the point is to review and explain, of course, the Senate amendments. And there's a couple venues you could do that, you simply just pull the amendments off of the website.
So, and, and Mr. Speaker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Summers.
Mr. Speaker, thank you, and, and just for every, you know, so this is kind of like, uh, in a way like the, the summary sheet, when, when we present the budget and the Senate has their amendments to the budget, we get kind of a summary sheet of those amendments, and it'll be in the form of those that are kind of identical and those that are non-identical. And so I think I just sent that out to all House represent, or all House members on 1001. Does, has anybody got that in their, in their mail?
Yeah, we all have it, I believe.
Okay.
Now, before we get started, I have another privilege of the floor, and that'd be Representative Stevar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, just as a reminder, it is Armed Forces Day today.
Okay, thank you, and I believe they're having a helicopter flyover today, and that is going to be around noon, so where, wherever we're at in our work, we'll pause and head out to the front steps. So, thank you, Representative Stevar. Uh, next, I have Representative Gray. Privilege of the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, so just a little clarification, you know, my, my understanding, a Joint Conference Committee Report means a committee has met and discussed the amendments. And was that what we're discussing right now, and if so, maybe I missed it last night? When was the committee appointed, and when did it meet?
He didn't miss anything, Representative Greer, there's been no committee appointed. This is just a format to show you the action on the bill. So everybody understands what the Senate did to the bill. We, we, of course, know what we did to it, but I think the good Representative Summers has organized it in such a way that it's really easy to compare and, and look at these amendments.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Representative Greer?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, and for the body, I have not organized Senate File 1004 as well as Representative Summers. I was going to walk through the amendments that are on the website, so I apologize to the body in advance.
I, that's what I was anticipating as well, I did, Representative Summers is way out front of all of us, so, well done. And, and I would just, so members, if you go to the website, then you go to our legislative website, and, and when you look at the bills, where it says View the Bills, so you'll want to go to Senate File 1001. You click on that, and then, of course, it's, it's, uh, you click on the Amendment Tabs at the very top, and then you can see all the Senate Amendments on Senate File 1001. And you can see Adopted and Failed and Divided and Corrected and those kind of things. And so we'll focus on the ones, obviously, that were adopted. Okay, any, those are all good questions, appreciate those. Any other questions or announcements? Privilege of the floor. Okay, Representative Summers, and everybody has your email. Are you ready?
Um, Mr. Speaker, thank you, and, and just a note out to, to Chairman Greer, you know, I think, I think staff was, I didn't do this by myself, staff created this, and I came in and got this, so kudos to staff. And I think there may be this sheet for other bills, it may not have them all completed right at the moment, but I bet everybody's going to be getting one of these, so, so Chairman Greer, I think you might be, might be getting one as well. Um, so, Mr. Mr. Speaker, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go through that document that I sent out to you, and I'm on page one. And so this is, uh, this, what we're going to be looking at...
Representative Summers?
Yes.
If I could just pause for a minute, I just got some information that, yes, this document that you're going to go over, these are already produced by staff for every bill. So Representative Greer and everyone, these will be coming out. So, when we were in bed after midnight last night, staff was still here, working, putting these together, so every bill will have these, okay? Every mere bill, yeah, the two engrossed, there'll be two engrossed Senate Files that will come over sometime today. Uh, but we're just working on these mere bills, so, okay, very good, thank you. Representative Summers?
Mr. Speaker, thank you, and so if you go to page one, really what this is going to be is just like the budget, so it's going to show... And, and the initial on page one is the identical amendments. So this is where a member in the body got another member in the other body, and they created mere amendments, which, which are not debatable in a conference committee, so these will go forward, it's just a matter of which one gets picked. And so if you take a look on one and two, and the first one is House Second Reading Amendment Number Two, and Senate Second Reading Amendment Number 16, page nine of the, of the bill, line 14, definition of state entity, and clarifies the state entity, do you include programs and services provided by a state entity or operated on behalf of a state entity by a third party? And I think if you all remember, that was Majority Floor Leader Barlow's amendment. And then if, uh, Mr. Mr. Speaker, if we drop down to three and four, House Third Reading Amendment Number One, and Senate Second Reading Amendment Number 10, page 10 on your bill, line five, capital construction, and it, and it includes major renovations or capital construction of facilities as allowable expenses by healthcare providers and healthcare facilities as approved by SLIB. Think we had a long, good discussion on, on that amendment in the House. Um, it also passed the Senate, and then five and six, you got House Second Reading Amendment Number Six, and Senate Second Reading Amendment Number 13, page 10, line 13. And this is further definition on, on kind of that same area. Includes any hospital or other healthcare facility that is operated by a governmental entity as a potential recipient of CARES Act funding in addition to Wyoming State Hospital and Wyoming Life Resource Center. And so that was more of that discussion we had around the, like, you know, around language to allow hospitals and healthcare facilities. And then, Mr. Speaker, number seven and eight, House Second Reading Amendment Number One, Senate Second Reading Amendment Number Eight, page 11 of your bill, line 13. And this authorizes funds to provide through grants for expenditures related to COVID-19 on the Wind River Reservation through SLIB to the Business Councils of Eastern Shoshone and Northern Rapaoh Tribes. And I, I'm sure everybody remembers that, that was the, the good representative from, from Fremont County. And then, Mr. Speaker, if you go to page two of this summary report, and now we get into the non-identical amendments, but I'm going to kind of break them up. Uh, nine through 15 are, are going to kind of have some similarities, and then 16 through 20 are going to be completely separate. So let's take nine and 10 to begin with. And so nine is Second Reading Amendment Number Seven, Senate Second Reading Amendment Number Seven. And, uh, and, and, and this is page five, line 19, um, and really goes into that section of the findings. And, and it acknowledges the extraordinary circumstances of COVID, and it talks about the constitutional and constitution, and how we're trying to meet those requirements of the Constitution. And as you recall, it, the good Chair, I believe the good Chair of Revenue brought this and passed it. But then on a third reading amendment in the House, the good Chair of Revenue brought a, an amendment to that amendment, you might say, and, and added in that bold language that you'll see on Article Seven, that was not mirrored in the Senate. So why these are not, so obviously, the Conference Committee will have to, to evaluate and, and, and pick something in between, but they're close enough, it'll be, you know, one or the other, or something in between. And so then, uh, Mr. Speaker, if you go down to 11 and 12, Senate Second Reading Amendment Number 14 was a technical correction, and I think you all remember that technical correction. And, and, but on the Senate side, so House Third, let me drop down to 12, House Third Reading Amendment Number Six was the technical correction that was brought. Senate Second Reading Amendment Number 14 was a technical correction, but it added in a little language. And that language that was in it, that was added in was expenditures made to adequately fund the workers' compensation account to pay for necessary and permissive liabilities are allowable. And so I think what, what I heard was on the Senate side, they did, the, the language was probably already in the bill, but they wanted to make it explicitly in the bill, and so those are very close, but not identical. And, uh, and then, Mr. Speaker, if you drop down, you can see that House Senate, uh, Second Reading Amendment Number Eight was wiped off by House Third Reading Amendment Number Seven. So House Second Reading Amendment Number Eight and Senate Second Reading Amendment Number 11 were identical. And that, this was page 11, line four. And it includes authorized expenses incurred by businesses, cooperatives, and political subdivisions of the state to produce and process food. This was in that section that dealt with food security, that the House, as you'll recall, had some concerns. The good Chair of Agriculture brought back, uh, Third Reading Amendment Number Seven, which, which states includes authorized expenses to produce and process food incurred by businesses, cooperatives, and political subdivisions of the state, which have suffered adverse market effects or experienced unusual levels of strain in the supply chain due to the impacts from COVID, trying to, trying to mesh that up, so similar, but not, not alike. And now we move into the completely, uh, I guess amendments that were kind of completely on their own, either the mirrors failed or whatever. 16, Senate Second Reading Amendment Number Nine, page three, line 10. And this modifies legislative findings to indicate COVID-19 prompted the state health officer to issue orders restricting economic activity, and adding the word "force" to the phrase "force closure of businesses." Uh, we had a vigorous debate in the House on that amendment, and we did not pass it. Um, but the Senate did, and then 17, Senate Third Reading Amendment Number Three, page 10, line two, healthcare entities includes rural health districts and hospital districts as eligible for such grants. I don't recall the House having a, a mere amendment on that, so I think that was just a Senate, Senate amendment. And obviously, it's Senate amendment that passed. And then, uh, Mr. Speaker, on 18, Senate Second Reading Amendment Number 12, page 11, line 13. And that adds an allowable purpose for the appropriation, specifically capital construction expenses, to improve the state's emergency healthcare capacity in response to COVID-19 must be requested by Homeland Security and proved by the State Building Commission. And so that passed in the Senate, as you recall, on the House. Um, that was a mere amendment that failed. And, uh, and so then on, on 19 is a House one, House Senate Second Reading Amendment Number 5.01, which means it was a division. Page 11, line 13. Authorizes funding for costs experienced by Wyoming businesses that were directed to cease or limit business operation under a statewide order issued by the governor or the state health officer in response to public health emergency caused by COVID. And as you recall, that amendment was put in to make it clear that the funding allocated in 1001 could be used for businesses and, and be applied to 1004. Excuse me, uh, Mr. Speaker, and then finally, uh, number 20, Senate Second Reading Amendment Number One, page 13, line 20. Um, removes the legislature as a recipient of the reporting by the grantee. And, and, and obviously, that wasn't mirrored on the House side. So, Mr. Speaker, I hope everybody could hear me, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Hey, very good, yes, we could hear you well. Members, are there any questions, Representative Summers? Any more questions on the explanation, if you'd like him to further clarify? It's really helpful. I'm waiting for any blue hands. Okay. No, uh, there being no further explanation, discussion of sentiments, amendments to the bill, pursuant to Joint Rule 23-1J, Senate File Number 1001 is referred directly to a Conference Committee of three members, three members from each House. three members from each House, and they'll meet to resolve these differences that the Speaker Pro Tem uh pointed out and that lie both in House Bill one thousand and one and Senate File one thousand and one. And I appoint that conference committee uh to be members Nicholas, Chair Swannitzer, and Lindholm. Okay, pursuant to Joint Rule twenty-three dash one H, Romanet two, Senate File one thousand and two is placed directly to third reading for the purpose of explanation of Senate amendments. Chief Clerk, can you please read the Senate File?
Senate File one zero zero two, sponsored by Management Council, Emergency Powers, COVID nineteen-two, an act relating to emergency aid and emergency procedures in response to the COVID-19 novel coronavirus pandemic, be it enacted by the Legislature of the State of Wyoming.
Okay, thank you, Chief Clerk. And I would ask uh, Member Management Counsel that sponsored this bill will be, to explain it, will be our good Majority Floor Leader, Representative Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, members, if you will, uh, you should have all received the summary report. Uh maybe give me a thumbs up. Uh, Mr. Richards from LSO sent out a a list of multiple ones, and everybody, I see lots of thumbs. So um if somebody hasn't received it, maybe um put your hand up and we'll we'll circle back and make sure.
Okay, and that, uh, if I could just, that was sent by Mr. Richards at nine thirty-one. Should be in your email, nine thirty-one. Three documents, I believe one oh two is the, at least the third document on mine, as you can click on and open. Okay, I'm looking at the screen. I don't see any hands have come up, no blue hands. We'll just pause for just a moment. Again, they'll find that in an email from Mr. It says LSO Don Richards, nine thirty-one AM. Okay, I'm seeing kind of heads nod and an affirmative. Okay, I have uh Representative Powell now. And Representative Hunt have their hands up. Just go to your email. Today's email. It'll be sorted by time. And literally got it about six minutes ago. Be right at the top of your email. Representative Hunt, did you have a question?
Mr. Speaker, thank you. Now, I I'm, for whatever reason, it's not showing up. Let me check my uh, I might try and check my uh spam box, but I I've got an email from somebody at nine thirty-three, but not at nine thirty-one.
Okay, we'll pause for just a minute.
Go ahead. Speaker, I I haven't received any email at all.
Okay, and I.
Of course, mine's a little slow up.
Yeah, to go ahead and refresh that, you can uh open your toolbar there at the top where it says send and receive. Can refresh that, click on that, it'll speed that up.
I've I've got it now, Mr. Speaker. Representative Flitner, Senate, thank you.
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay, beautiful. Is everybody good? I see no more hands up. I'm gonna mute Representative Powell, because I can hear his email coming in. Okay, very good. Representative Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, members, I will um, I I have both the amendments on my screen and are available on my screen and the joint conference summary report. So I'm going to take it in the order of the joint summary report, but I will probably be pulling up some amendments so that um if there's any questions on particular amendments. Um you will note from the very top, there are no not, there are no identical amendments. So we had some differences all the way through on these amendments, often created by subsequent amendments, um not because we didn't start similar, the same, but there was other amendments that altered. So the first amendment um that's on our list under JC's or uh non-identical is Senate Third Reading Amendment number one. Um ladies and gentlemen, this was an amendment that was also brought to this bill, but we had a Rules Committee, um and it was ruled not germane. So the House did not adopt or did not consider and or adopt this. This is the civil liability component. It was adopted um into the Senate File. The next uh two and three um go together in a in a certain way. One's a second reading and one's a third reading. Um but this is the workers' comp definitions. You recall, we had the the first one, it was a mirror amendment um from the House, we had one as well. The second one, second, third reading number two, was a technical correction that I was also offered, but it was at a point in the evening where we our timing with the Senate was a little off. And so I just, I said, if they, one of us gets it in, we'll be fine. So this will be a technical amendment, literally part of it changes the thirty-first to the first. And the second part of it um is basically a a way to roll funds if they're not uh appropriated. So um it it may be more than just technical, but we didn't want to strand. The point was that our LSO staff is, you don't want to strand funds. So we can take a further look at the particular language in that. Uh the next one is um Senate uh brought is Senate Second Reading number four. Uh this increased uh the program by five million dollars. Um then we go to the bottom of the page. We have um a couple of things. These are new amendments, were not considered in the House. Um Senate Third Reading, uh Senate, excuse me, Senate Second Reading number three. This does two components, a workers' comp and a unemployment program um changes. And what this allows is the the um agency, Workforce Services could, by rule, delay payments and and um use credits, earned credits um for liabilities, either in workers' comp or UI, employer liability. So delay payments would only be um, they'd only be eligible if there's CARES money available to cover those costs. So this is not a holiday, the way I understand the amendment. It's a delay in making those payments. Um so so it's it's not a, it's not a holiday. It's just basically backfilling, and then those payments would be due subsequently um at a later time, to be determined by rule. Um the final Senate reading, um Second Reading and number five um has another, has a new section also added that allows um temporary programs. I think this is what you might have recognized from Senate File one zero zero one, um where we gave authority for programs. But it also allows federal funds and um existing appropriations to waive fees that may be charged by the state. So we've heard discussion about this before, whether it's licenses for restaurants or brand inspection fees or whatever. Um if we have a way to backfill those fees, then they uh and a way to backfill the fees, and this would allow the governor to establish programs, that would that would allow that to happen. So with that, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Speaker, um, that's that's off the summary sheet. If we want to get into any of the amendments individually, I'm going to refer directly to their amendments for the dat- detail. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. Are there any questions? Looking for any blue hands raised? Okay, I have one, Representative Yen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh Majority Floor Leader, the um Senate Third Reading Amendment number one, because in our chamber, we ruled this amendment, the identical amendment, not germane. If this comes back from a conference committee report, would it also be possible that we rule this not germane? Because as a conference committee report, it would amend the original bill. Is that correct?
Mr. Speaker, so I guess um.
You know, and let me just uh for this explanation, and I think we'll we'll uh, we'll just take these. I guess I'll ask you, Representative Barlow, do you want to take these one at a time, or you just want to take several of them and then address them?
How about we take several, because I need to think about the first one just a minute.
Okay, so write that one down, we'll keep rolling. Thank you for the question, Representative Yen. Now we're going to Representative Larson Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Uh, Representative Bartle, if you could help me on that. Second um number two, it looks like that's more technical. Uh is also a lot of technical correction, like number three, is is there some added language in there that changes the program that you're seeing differently?
Okay, and then a question from Representative Stiff.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, just a comment on the civil liability position. It seems like a solution would be to allow the uh House then to debate the matter, whether it's germane or not.
Okay, Representative Summers?
Um, Mr. Speaker, thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Majority Floor Leader, uh, kind of similar to the the good representative from Fremont County. If you could, you know, if you could kind of explain um number four on the chart, which is House Second Reading Amendment number one, and how it fits in with Senate Second Reading Amendment number one. And um I can't tell if if that was identical or not, and then if there was a correction. So those all seem, I haven't read the verbiage, and maybe you haven't had an op- an opportunity either, but it it looks like some of that is pretty close to the same. So if you could uh take a look at that and let me know, maybe it's just a little little difference that's just, they're not identical, but close, maybe.
Okay, and then I, are there, I don't see any other members with hands up. Any other questions? Then I'll turn it over to Representative Barlow. Okay, Representative Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So um first to um Representative from Teton County's question about how it comes back in a jo- joint conference committee. Certainly, we vote on joint conference committees. And if a component came back that the body disagreed with and um and chose not to concur with the conference committee, then we would have the option of going back for a subsequent, potential subsequent conference committee, which would be a free um conference committee. So I think that's the most, um probably the cleanest way to um to proceed if that one was reported out with a joint conference committee report. Uh, the second question for, and and I was writing numbers down and trying to look back and forth at the screen. I think actually, uh Representatives um from Sublet and um in the Lander area, both Sublet County and Lander, both are kind of talking to the same issue. And there were mirror amendments on second reading under the workers' comp program. But subsequent to that, there were several technical amendments made, changes made, a third reading of my number two, and a um another amendment here, I'm sorry, I'm I'm looking um that that amended that. So that's why they're non-identical now, because they kind of, I guess they kind of get mashed up. So the original amendment, I believe, was identical, and then there were some technical amendments that changed that. So um I think too, and the substantive one, the the one that actually is the one is, if you look at Senate Third Reading Amendment number two, you'll see that um the date changed, December thirty to December thirty-one to December thirty. Um we've had that in other amendments, this one, literally, I missed it, and I I missed it in my amendment, caught it, and then they got it in at on their side. Um so now we can get to the correct date uh through conference committee based on the CARES Act. Um a few other technical things that happened. And then you'll see a um, the bottom of the page, line eighteen, what we didn't want to do is strand money. As you know, the money is is kind of set out and compartmentalized and compartmentalized. So you'll see that September fifteenth, um we got to, we got to make sure we know what the, what we need for that fund before we expend it for other reasons. If we don't need it, then it goes into the, back into the one thousand and one bills. So it was just to make sure we knew the cost of these programs, or the potential cost, estimate them. And then, before, we lost all of the CARES funds. And then if it wasn't used, of course, it would flow back into one thousand and one. So I think that is, that one, I'm just going to take a step back, immunity. I didn't have any questions on the other programs, the delay in payments, and the premium credit. I think I, I think I covered the questions. If I didn't, I apologize, and please re- re-ask.
Thank you, uh, Representative Barlow. And yeah, that germaneness issue, it would be simply, we wouldn't have that debate. We'd just either accept the conference committee report, or we wouldn't. And uh, and that debate could happen within the conference committee, certainly. Okay, I have another hand raised. Representative Clem?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So at the bottom of the summary report, this is um the very last amendment there offered by the Senate, Second Reading Amendment number five, adds a new section seven permitting new temporary programs. And I'm, I just briefly pulled up the amendment um on the website. I I guess my question is, if you have any other information, it seems like this is uh, sky's the limit. I don't, I don't see any kind of limiting factors of of programs, or it sounds like that that it's authorizing the governor to do really whatever he wants with these federal funds as far as creating new programs. I guess if you can confirm that or uh add add to that, if there's something I'm missing, I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, Mr. Representative Barlow?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I think that um it was summarized quite well. And I can't speak to the overall intent as the sponsors. I did not contact the sponsors regarding um what their overall or overarching interest was, as there's no specificity in this. And so I don't know that the sky is the limit, but we can certainly get to the ceiling potentially. Um I'd also, and I I'll have to go back and look at one zero zero one. You'll recall, we have some fairly broad authority in that as well. I think it's under uh section two, maybe one A or something like that. Um so I'm going to see if this may be just maybe mirroring some of that language um a little bit. So I I too need to learn a little more about this, um and we'll certainly hear about it in conference committee. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Any other? I'm looking for any blue hands. Okay, I don't see any further questions, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. There being no uh further explanation or discussion of Senate amendments to this bill pursuant to Joint Rule twenty-three dash one, paragraph J, Senate File Number one thousand and two is referred directly to a conference committee of three members from each House to meet and resolve the differences between the houses with respect to both bills, House Bill one zero zero two and Senate File one zero zero two. I would uh like to announce that conference committee will be Representative Barlow, Chair, Representative Conley, and Representative Wilson. Okay, members, pursuant to Joint Rule twenty-three dash one H, Romanet two, Senate File one thousand and four is placed directly to third reading for the purpose of explanation of Senate amendments. Chief Clerk, can you please read the Senate File?
Senate File one zero zero four, sponsored by Joint Minerals Business and Economic Development. COVID-19 Business Relief Programs Two, an act relating to the emergency expenses of government related to business relief, be it enacted by the Legislature of the State of Wyoming.
Okay, thank you. I'd ask that Representative Greer, uh, please go through the Senate changes to the bill.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Let me get just a moment and get organized here, so I can see my stuff. Okay, so, members, I'm looking at the summary report for uh House Bill zero zero four, Senate Files zero zero four, and then I'll refer back to the amendments as need be. Um so first of all, we see, uh, I believe it was a Baldwin uh Summers mirror amendment um taking the first grant program, uh so that the base amount was fifteen thousand, taking that up to twenty thousand. Mirror amendment, good amendment, we won't be discussing that further. So the second um amendment and probably the the more significant difference between the House and Senate is their inbox. is their inbox number three, uh, and that is the establishment of a fourth program with fifty thousand dollars, uh, to be administered by the state loan and in both, state loan and investment board. Um, that, uh, initial amendment was divided, the second part was, uh, defeated, uh, concerning the, uh, language regarding, uh, state takings. What was left in, um, was a separate program, probably without a lot of guidance to it, except that it was for those businesses identified for those businesses only, uh, who were closed. And then, uh, on Third Reading, uh, there was another amendment that was adopted by the Senate, uh, which, uh, gave that sort of a title and a little bit of an explanation saying expedited closure reimbursement program. Again, those two go together to make that a separate and distinct program managed by a different, um, uh, agency of government. Okay, so I think we're all a little bit familiar with that. Now, the next part of this is not quite as, uh, complicated as it looks, and actually, we're very close, uh, between the House and Senate. So what the Senate, uh, had was, they had initially passed, um, I think it was Representative Clem had the amendment on our side where we changed grant, uh, or excuse me, loan to grant, uh, where that failed, and then we came back in and then did the, uh, the more, uh, the other, uh, loan to grant amendment. What happened in the Senate is they adopted, uh, this amendment, and then, as you'll see down below, uh, they deleted that amendment. It was deleted by, uh, Senate File, or, or the Senate Second Reading Amendment Number Six, which in essence was identical to the House Second Reading Amendment Number Four, which is where the House ended up. Um, so hopefully that all makes sense. In, in the end, uh, we're in the same place to that point. So then we move down to Box Eight, uh, and this is a further Senate amendment. Um, I, I am quite frankly, I think, uh, half of this amendment is quite good. Uh, and what it did in the, the, the first grant, you know, the immediate, what we want to be immediate, which probably be two weeks, which is immediate for government. Uh, it expanded that, uh, those businesses that were covered, uh, to something that said those that are impacted by the overall COVID crisis. So sort of, uh, expanded that there. Um, I don't, uh, that's the part I don't particularly like. I, I'd like to go back up, uh, to Box Three and say that we're giving a preference for those businesses that were closed. However, when we go then next to the, uh, the other component of it in Program Number Three, which is a larger program, uh, with the three hundred thousand dollar amounts, it does expand. Uh, it does do the same, uh, comprehensive expansive language. I think that's probably very appropriate there, and, and a good amendment. Um, now moving down to Box Nine, uh, and this is, um, again, on that, uh, third section, the second pool of funds, the three hundred thousand, we had that, uh, with a hundred or fewer employees, and this amendment simply stripped out, uh, any employee requirements, a number requirement, meaning that, um, any, any size business, uh, would be eligible for those grant funds. And, uh, do keep in mind, it still kept, uh, the requirements, uh, that it be, um, a Wyoming, uh, they, uh, business with a nexus in Wyoming. So, um, pretty close, be nice to, uh, knock this one out, get this out to the people quickly today. So stand for any questions.
Yeah, sorry, uh, members. Thank you, Representative Greer. Any questions? Please raise your blue hand. I don't see. Okay, there we have Representative Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So back up in Box, uh, Three, is that an additional appropriation of, uh, fifty million, or, um, is that just the, the way it was proposed in the, in the bill?
Uh, and I'll just go ahead, let's ask a few questions that in turn of back order, Representative Greer. So next is Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a quick question, and I should have probably asked this yesterday, but, um, the idea of this being a Wyoming business with a nexus in Wyoming, um, does this qualify anybody who registers an LLC with the Secretary of State within the state of Wyoming? And so any of these shell corporations or anything like that may be open for, um, potential, like, survival funds from our state that aren't necessarily physically located in the state. Um, again, my apologies, I should have probably caught that yesterday.
Okay, are there any other questions of Representative Greer? Okay, Representative Greer.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, let me address, I'll, I'll go in reverse order, uh, to Representative Brown's question. And, uh, it's on a couple pages, uh, Representative, and it's identical, but I'm actually looking at page eleven of the, of the, uh, bill. Um, in, in, and this is for both of the, uh, both of the grant programs, one in Section Two and one in Section Three. Uh, and this is, language is independently owned and operated, is headquartered in Wyoming, or has its principal operations located in Wyoming. So the, to answer your question specifically is no, a shell corporation would not work. Um, and this language follows some of this long debated, as, uh, Representative Larson would know, uh, language regarding contractor preferences and so far, uh, so forth. Um, with respect to, uh, Representative Sweeney's question, uh, is yes, this is the, uh, the, the so-called Fourth Program, um, is an additional appropriation of an additional fifty thousand dollars. So that, that, um, gives us lots of possibilities, uh, as we, uh, try to find a nice solution with our brethren down the hall.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions? Looking for blue hands. I see one, Representative Furphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so if, if I'm looking at this right, Chairman Greer, on number nine, it's taking out the requirement that it's for a hundred employees or less. So my concern becomes, that opens it up to big business, and they may dominate those proceeds. So I appreciate your input on that.
Okay, and then Representative Sweeney has a question.
Thank you, Miss, Mr. Speaker. So my sheet shows fifty, I think that says fifty million, not fifty thousand. Just looking for some clarification there.
Okay, thank you. And Representative Greer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I have a tendency to do this. Um, so when I'm talking about my personal finances, I'd be talking about five thousand. If I talk about my business finances, I'd be talking about fifty thousand, and then when I move down to the state, I have to talk about fifty million, and I sometimes get that decimal wrong. You're absolutely right, it's fifty million. Um, and, uh, Representative Furphy, the reason why you're on minerals and a valued minerals committee member is you're absolutely right. Absolutely right, that, uh, that in Box Nine would open that up to very large businesses, and they would, um, maybe do exactly what you had suggested.
Sounds like that one will be talked about in conference. Okay, any further questions? All very good questions. Looking for blue hands. I do not see any more blue hands. Okay, there being no further explanation or discussion of Senate amendments to this bill pursuant to Joint Rule Twenty-three dash one, Paragraph J, Senate File Number One Zero Zero Four, and is referred directly to a conference committee of three members from each house to meet and resolve the differences between the houses with respect to both bills, House Bill One Thousand Four and Senate File One Thousand Four. So I would appoint, uh, conference committee Greer, Chairman, Burkhart, and Duncan. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, so I think a recess would be in order for conference committees to, uh, meet. Um, do you have a particular timeframe you would like to meet, or for that time?
You know, um, I think we continue to check in on the hour. So if we could, say it's ten o'clock now, we'll check back at eleven, and then check back at noon and so on, I think, Mr.
Okay.
Majority Floor. Mr. Majority Floor, and, and then, so do you have a motion? And then I'll go to announcements.
Mr. Speaker, I've moved the House stand in recess until eleven AM.
Okay, announcements, I have Representative Blake.
Yep, Mr. Speaker, not necessarily an announcement, but, uh, will these conference committees be on the Zoom platform? Will, will we be able to participate, or, or, excuse me, listen in? Will the public be able to listen in? I just wondered how the conference committee is going to work with some people being at the Capitol and some of that.
No, that's a great question, and, uh, appreciate you, I should have mentioned that. So now, just like, um, we have a Senate and a House channel out there that people are watching underneath the legislative YouTube channel. Uh, they can see both the Senate and the House simultaneously if they'd like, and then they're recorded. Uh, we will now go to four channels, or excuse me, three, there's only three conference committees. We'll go to three conference committee channels on our YouTube channel. So every one of those will be broadcast, and so you can watch it on YouTube, or, uh, and people back home can watch those on YouTube as well. So Representative Blake, I appreciate you asking that question, very good. Okay, next I have Representative Greer has his hand up.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, thank you. Uh, I would like to, uh, discuss among the members this process a little bit more primarily because I don't understand it. Uh, traditionally, what we would do is receive a message from the, from the Senate that a conference committee was appointed, and who that was, and then I would go find, uh, their chairman and set up a meeting. Um, how, how is that going to work, and do I have to, uh, hang around for an hour to find out? Uh, could you, Mr. Speaker, just maybe walk us through how you envision this working from top to bottom?
Sure, appreciate the question. And so, uh, and I don't know what order business, uh, Senate is, as I look down the hall. Um, they're probably s- pretty close to us, uh, and they will appoint those committees, and then invites will be sent out to members of the conference committees. Those, those, uh, will get messages from the Senate at some point on who those members are, but I would assume that you would also get an email invite, uh, to join in this, uh, Zoom conference committee meeting, which will be broadcast on YouTube. Did any follow-up there, Representative Greer? So watch your email, as my. Okay, Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, just sort of a reminder and clarification for me and for maybe observers. Um, because we've got mirror bills, and certainly when we have the budget, I mean, most of our mirror bills in the past have been, uh, things that had dollar amounts in them. And i- if you could just refresh my memory, so the first time around, I, where we have to pick one amendment or the other, is my recollection, and then we have to actually go to an open committee, I think, if, for a second time, in order to dive into the language, and seeing as we don't have dollar amounts, where we can split the difference between twenty million and ten million, that, does that just open up the language? Could you just refresh my memory on how that will work with the, the conference committees?
Yeah, great question. And so, like all conference committees, you can basically adopt one or the, if they're identical, you're going to adopt those. Like the last bill that Representative Greer, the First Amendments are identical. So you won't even talk about those, you'll adopt one side or the other, right? So that'll be adopted. Then you have some that are very close, might be a word or two difference. And so you have two positions that are very close. You could, you could adopt one or the other, or you could delete and further amend, and change that language a little bit, that it's, that it's within the scope of those two positions, and the conference committee agrees on that. And then the third really category are amendments that are completely different. And those are the toughest ones, frankly. And you might have two House amendments that the Senate doesn't have, and two Senate amendments that the House doesn't have. Many times, you might take them all out, or you might agree to keep one of each sides, or those kind of things. But, uh, uh, so those are usually where the most work begins. And then you, if you do agree, if that, those six people agree, they'll sign a conference committee report, bring that conference committee report back to their respective bodies and explain it to us. And then it's up to the body to decide, can I live with this bill? And they either approve the conference committee report, we approve it, or we don't. And if we choose not to approve that conference committee report, then a second conference committee can be appointed, and, and then they have even a little more freedom. You're right, to go in and, and, uh, work even beyond the parameters of the amendments passed by the bodies. It's called a free committee at that point. That doesn't happen very often, and I don't anticipate that happening today. You never know. Okay, thank you. Representative Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, just a quick, uh, another piece of clarification here. Um, what will happen with the engrossed bills? Because I believe, uh, Senate File One Thousand Three, uh, made it through their process as well as One Thousand Five. Uh, will we be hearing those later today, once they're engrossed and brought over? Or are we not going to hear those since our body, um, decided not to hear those particular bills? Can you just maybe explain that for us as well as the public, whether or not we will discuss those bills as they move forward?
Yeah, good question. So those bills are going through, it's called the engrossing process now, so they're being proofread and formalized, and that Senate File will be signed by the, uh, President of Senate and sent down the hall. That'll happen sometime today. I would say the clock is ticking on those bills, and they're not going to make it. And that's why we've used the mirror bill process, and, uh, so I hope that was, that wasn't cryptic. I think that was very clear. Uh, the clock, we're going to run out of time on those. Okay, and next is Representative Crank has a question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So as the, uh, committees get notified that they're going to meet, um, will the rest of the body get notified which committees are meeting when, so we're, we can tune in?
You know, that's, I'll, uh, make sure that we get those sent out to all legislators, and then those should be posted on the website too, but I, it could be good, I agree with you, that we all get notified same time, hey, committee on Senate File, House Bill One Oh Four, One Thousand Four is going to meet at, you know, eleven forty-five. Yeah, I agree, that's a good point. I'll follow up on that. Chief Clerk's here and all this too, we'll make sure that, uh, we get those notifications out, okay? I think our staff is way ahead of us on some of these things. I don't know the, but, uh, they're generally way ahead of us. Okay, Representative Summers?
Um, Mr. Speaker, thank you. I just popped in on the website on the Senate side, and they were in an explanation of the process on how this conference committee stuff was going to work. So they're kind of about in the same place we are, just so everybody knows.
Okay, perfect. Very good. Okay, this, this could go faster than you think. I, uh, we'll see, once these all get working together. Any other questions? Okay, are there any other announcements? So you've heard the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand. So the motion carries, and, uh, we, the House is in recess until eleven AM.
Good afternoon. Uh, can you hear me out there, Jamie? Representative Freeman, you can hear me? Okay, members, all we do, uh, we, we're just coming back, we have a few messages from the Senate, so Chief Clerk, can you please read those messages? Go ahead, Chief Clerk.
Messages from the Senate. Uh, message number three, Mr. Speaker, the Senate has completed consideration of the mirror bill, House Bill One Zero Zero One. In accordance with Joint Rule Twenty-three dash one J, the bill has been referred directly to a conference committee of three members to meet with a light committee from the House to report recommended amendments for final consideration. to report recommended amendments for final consideration by both houses with respect to both bills, Senate File One Zero Zero One and House Bill One Zero Zero One, and the amendments thereto. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Message one zero, one, one zero, Mr. Speaker. The Senate appointed Senate Conferes to meet with a light committee, number one, from the House on amendments to House Bill One Zero Zero One. The Senate Conferes are Senate Senator Docstetter, Chairman Senator Gru, Senator Wasserberger. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Message number four, Mr. Speaker, the Senate has completed consideration of the mirror bill, House Bill One Zero Zero Two. In accordance with Joint Rule twenty-three dash one J, the bill has been referred directly to a Conference Committee of three members to meet with a light committee from the House to report recommended amendments for final consideration by both houses with respect to bill, both bills, Senate File One Zero Zero Two and House Bill One Zero Zero Two, and the amendments thereto. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Message one zero eight, Mr. Speaker. The Senate appointed Senate Conferes to meet with a light committee, number one, from the House on amendments to House Bill One Zero Zero Two. The Senate Conferes are Senator Driscoll, Chairman Senator Insalmi Dalton, Senator Nethercutt. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Message number five, Mr. Speaker. The Senate has completed consideration of the mirror bill, one, House Bill One Zero Zero Four. In accordance with Joint Rule twenty-three dash one J, the bill has been referred directly to a Conference Committee of three members to meet with a light committee from the House to report recommended amendments for final consideration by both houses with respect to both bills, Senate File One Zero Zero Four and House Bill One Zero Zero Four, and the amendments thereto. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk. Message one thirteen. Mr. Speaker. The Senate appointed Senate Conferes to meet with a light committee, number one, from the House on amendments to House Bill One Zero Zero Four. The Senate Conferes are Senator Anderson, Chairman Senator Bebaut, Senator Rothfuss. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk.
Hey, thank you very much. Any other messages? Anything else? Any announcements? Okay, members, these Conference Committees then will now officially get out and get meeting. You can check YouTube for any of, any of those. And so let's stand in recess until, let's say, twelve thirty. And we'll just do a check back in and might be a short, they're still meeting, and we'll check back later and so on. So I will, the House will stand in recess until twelve thirty PM. Thank you. Please stop your video and mute your mics.